Hello everyone, welcome to the Berlin Select Board meeting for Monday, November 14th. Oh my goodness, how does time fly by? Let's see, we call the meeting to order. Oh my goodness, my disclaimer is removed from the beginning of the agenda. This is the problem we do new layouts. I don't know where it is.
Where is your disclaimer?
I know, normally I let people know generally that, oh, there we go. Every rule we made. Oh, I don't think that's the disclaimer though. Anyway, I want to say that basically that this is being recorded and that your name and your likeness, your number and your voice may be broadcast on our YouTube channel and our cable access channel. And I will probably say that better later on. Well, there we go. It's under announcements, see? These are the vertical borders like are generally recorded for transmission about the Berlin Cable Access Channel and YouTube, your voice, your image and your telephone number may be recorded there. We'll have some fancy editing, we'll take that out later on. I believe we're actually going to start the meeting today with an executive session. We're going to do an executive session to conduct a strategy session preparations for negotiations with the Berlin Police Union. And then once we are done the executive session, we're going to return to this Zoom channel right here. I believe that it requires a roll call vote for us to enter executive session. And so Hawkins, I.
If I. Oh, you're muted, Peg. Okay, there I am. Stone eye. All right.
I do not expect this to be a super long executive session. We'll be back as soon as we can.
Hi, everyone. It's been a while, like a minute. Let's see, I think we're to pick up on the agenda then under approval of minutes.
So make a motion to approve the minutes of November 7.
Second.
It looks fine to me, too. So Hawkins, I.
Kefi.
Stone, I.
Great. Kristin is there correspondence where they have conversation tonight or no?
Couple of little pieces of correspondence that is maybe interesting to the board and the general public. I'm in the, hold on, sorry, I gotta get back to where I was. Oh goodness. Closed out the wrong part of the Google Drive. Can we just one second? Technology on a Monday. All right, there we go. So this is also in my town administrator report, but I am pleased to announce that the town officially closed last week on Horseshoe Pond and does own it from the trust. So that is really exciting news. Also, we have a couple of draft letters in correspondence that the board can review. One of which is a we're sort of disappointed letter to LL Bean. And it basically very politely says, we're very excited to have you here. We wish you would say you were here. Because we're so excited and proud to have you here. We also were very impressed by your generous donation. Unfortunately, the Metro West Boys and Girls Club does not serve the town of Berlin and our children are unable to take advantage of those services. Talk a little bit about the town and, you know, some of the wonderful things we have to offer. And we also wanted to see see the developer of Highland Commons and ask that they advise their tenants, whether they're on the Hudson or Berlin side going forward, because it likely may not even be through any fault of LL Beans. They may have just seen the Hudson mailing address and not have been advised that they actually are in our wonderful town. So it's a nice letter that sort of gently says, hey, by the way, you know, please tell people you're here and not in Hudson. And I happen to have the iHeartRadio playing through my computer last week and all day long, all I heard was the LL Bean located in Hudson, our new store, playing over and over and over again. So if the board is amenable to the letter, we can send it out, or if you have any changes, we can make those as well.
Well, I had one suggestion and I'm trying to find out, find where it was.
I thought there was a misspelling in one of the paragraphs. Now I'm trying, because I wrote down misspelling. Now I'm trying to find it.
Well, there wasn't, there was a somewhere in here. It says that we were surprised.
We were. Yes, first paragraph, second line. There you go.
There goes, but we were surprised to hear. I would really like to add surprised and disappointed because I don't think disappointed is in here.
But we can definitely do that.
And then I didn't know if there was anything we should add at the end, like going forward. We'd appreciate you realizing you're in Berlin. I don't know, you know, I wouldn't know how to word it.
No, and I think we just, yeah, I think we just need to say, you know what, it's it's kind of like when your parents said, I'm not mad at you. I'm more disappointed. That one always like killed my heart more than if they were like really mad at me. So.
Right. And I think we do kind of touch upon the paragraph. I think it says that, you know, there's a lot to love about Berlin and want you to know that we are so very proud to have you here this fall. We take great pride in our community and would love to showcase the fact that you are a part of us.
Yeah.
But very disappointed.
The just, yes, I just added the point. Maybe so maybe I was, I was too nice.
So very, we could say we're very proud to have LL Bean opening stores here in the fall, but just disappointed. That you don't realize you're here. You know. Yeah, I really truly was very disappointed.
It is disappointing, especially LL Bean is a very nationwide renowned company. I mean, it's it's a big deal. And I think everybody's very excited about it and we would like them to showcase the fact that they're here.
In Berlin. I mean, I put this more in Benderson and they were standing when Chris and I were standing there talking to the lady from LL Bean. And Karen Frecker who works for Representative Hogan out of Hudson. Both, you know, like Chris and I and Karen were kind of giving it to her and the Benderson people were standing right there and didn't say boo as to sorry, we'll fix this. They just stood there.
And this, this will go to the LL Bean headquarters also. That's good.
Yes.
So that they're aware, because I don't think LL Bean and Highland Commons is going to say, oh, thank you very much and you know, but I, you know. So that might be helpful. All right.
Cool.
And then the other item is the item submission from Peg.
Yes. I mean, it was very good, Peg.
Yeah, I mean, this one was really, I wanted it to be all about Kristen. You know, because she's here and it, I know it came up during coffee talk about, you know, what are you guys working on? So it's like, here you go. Here's what we're working on. And, you know, just the a little ditty about the bucket truck is up and running note that I did not say Peg would be up in the cherry picker riding throughout the town. I left that out. And wanted to say welcome aboard to Adam. And a little shout out to Carolyn McDonald, who was recognized by SBT Sudbury Valley Trust on, there are only a few people recognized at that dinner for conservation awards, you know, Carolyn and that whole team. They did a lot of work to make Horseshoe Pond, Horseshoe Pond, Berlin, Horseshoe Pond. So just wanted to.
What dinner was that?
It was an SVT award dinner.
I wasn't aware that she was given an award.
Yeah. And you know what? It came to me from the wife of a member of the conservation committee. So conservation didn't even recognize Carolyn. So it kind of came to me roundabout. So, yeah, it was nothing that we did. It was just an SVT dinner that they have to recognize their volunteers and Carolyn happened to be one of them. Yep. But now, now that Jan is back at the item, I have utmost confidence that this will get in, you know, if approved and we'll be all be reading it in the paper on Friday. Yay.
It looks great.
Cool.
Are you, you want a motion to approve?
Sure, please.
So moved.
I'll second. Hawkins, I.
Kefi.
Stone, you betcha.
Let's see. I think we're ready for general public comments. If there are members of the audience who have a quick comment or question, you can raise your hand to be recognized. And while we're doing that, we can bring Fred Cummings forward to do his presentation with the Highway Department.
I don't see Fred.
Oh, sorry. I thought I, you know, I actually don't see him there either.
You know, we actually had him the week that Kristen and Scott were gone. Do you remember that, Peg?
Yeah.
You had a meeting that week?
Not, no, no.
No. You were gone, Scott.
Yeah, I was gone.
Yeah, I just.
Kristen may have been with us. So it wasn't that long ago. So that when I saw that, I thought, you know.
Yeah. Yeah. So no friend.
Okay.
Hey, great.
Well, we'll get this straightened out at some point. Time Minister Report.
Okay, I'm just making a note on the department head's schedule. We'll get that sorted out. All right. So let me go there. All right. So it was actually a short week last week. We had Veterans Day. Many, many thanks to all of our veterans for their service. We did get a lot done on the budget. Actually, June was two days early. She distributed the budget packages on Thursday before we left for the long weekend. So the budget packages are out. Department heads have them, boards and committees, they are due back by November 30th. And we are having two kickoff meetings. They are both happening tomorrow. 10am and 6pm. There are Zoom links available. Mary sent out an email. And we are going to move forward. We also spoke with the department heads at the department head meeting last week and went over the basics of the budget process as well. So shouldn't be too long of meetings. Nothing's really changed, except we have a new supplemental funding request form that we spoke a bit about here and with FinCom and with the department heads that we'll be discussing, but that's pretty straightforward. All of the other forms are the same. And then FinCom will begin meeting with departments on December 14th. They are going to start with fire and schools. And I am subsequently working on a joint letter as we had talked about to the Berlin Boylston Regional School District from the Select Board and the Finance Committee. And I had started to work up a letter that, hold on one second, I have right here. Too many things all on my desk. Too many things all on my desk. So basically, the purpose of the letter was to remind them to please stay within the two and a half percent that we are proposing for this year. To ask them to come to the FinCom meeting on December fourteenth. We are also asking for them to provide us with preliminary budget estimates by that time. And basically, we want to remind them of the increases that they've had two years in a row, which were larger and FinCom was actually able to fill me in very quickly with those numbers. From F Y twenty-one to twenty-two, there was a four point two percent increase for Berlin middle and hold on. For the elementary school system and six point four percent for Tejano. And then from F Y twenty-two over to F Y twenty-three, there was a four point five percent increase for elementary and five point four percent increase for Tejano. So those numbers are larger than the general increases that had been recommended or actually the departments um, on the town side had been required to adhere to. It's a little trickier with a regional school district because it's not something that you know, comes completely under the purview. I'm more familiar with having an in-town district where you can give them a number and say, this is the number you have to hit. And it's a little bit trickier. So we definitely want to get this letter out to them. And I actually, I don't know, did I drop it into the TA folder? I did not. Um, if you give me just a moment, Mary, do I have the ability to share this letter?
You should, yes.
Excellent. Let's see. So let me just share this. So FinCom was fine with this letter. They just asked that I put in that additional data that I just gave to you. Are you able to see this letter now? Okay, so it was pretty straightforward. Um, we also asked that they give us a copy of their budget calendar. So that um, our members of either FinCom Select Board, any other interested parties can attend their district budget meeting. Um, and just kind of reaching out to them and saying, this is what we're doing. We'd love it if you could stick to it. And then adding that data that I mentioned. Um, also, what I understand from FinCom is the package of information they actually provided last year was very helpful. And we want to just add a sentence that says, if you could please provide similar data again this year, um, which includes actuals from F Y twenty-two along with your projections from F Y twenty-three. And um, any other helpful data you can kind of provide for us to start to dissect this um, budget and get through the process. So if I have the blessing of the Select Board, I'd like to have this sent jointly from the two chairs. And what I will do is I will just add, like I said, that sentence in about the data and the increases as well as please provide us similar to what you provided last year.
Would you like a motion?
Sure, if you'd be open to that, or if anyone wants any changes.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the letter for our chairman to sign.
Second.
Uh, I'm not hearing there's needed for other discussion. So Hawkins, I.
Eight by.
Stone, I.
Great. Thank you very much. And then, um, so last week was mostly focused around getting everything out for the budget. Um, but also had some interesting meetings on health insurance. Um, met with Cooking Company, who is our health insurance ed bro advisor and Maya, who actually provides the health insurance and it looks like are, we're trending a little bit high on claims. So they are recommending that we budget anywhere from between an eight to ten percent increase on the health insurance side. They don't anticipate it will ultimately come in quite that high, but that is a conservative budget recommendation. Um, our percentages were pretty high on claims this year and last year. So so far this year and last year. Um, and that does drive or will drive a bit of a rate increase. And that's something they will have more firm numbers for us going forward, but they wanted to give us a heads up as to where we were trending um, going forward. We also discussed the possibility of adding a flex spending account where employees can have a certain amount of their um, paycheck taken out pre-tax and put into um, basically an account that can be spent on prescriptions, co-pays, things of that nature. There is a small administrative fee. I understand the board may have looked at this a little last year. She said it was somewhere around twenty-eight hundred dollars um, for that administrative fee. So that is something I did ask if they would just give us a proposal on. And then we talked a little bit about um, post-employee benefit retirement, um, O P E B, health insurance and kind of ways that we might be able to make that work. We're going to continue to have those conversations. Um, I also had a very um, helpful, what was it, two or two and a half hour, Chris? Discussion with the folks over at River Bridge, got the history kind of of the project, where they're at. Um, you know, what kind of some of the stumbling blocks have been for them. Um, and you know, where they see things going forward, which was very helpful. I was also invited to visit nineteen Carter and I was able to have a chat with some residents over there. Got to, there's a men's table and a women's table when I went, so I, I got to sit. I sat with the ladies for quite some time. I stood with the men. I, I feel like I could have sat, but you know, I wanted to be respectful of, of our divisions here. So I, uh, it was really great to kind of see how everything works over there. They had a group playing in the basement, like a twelve, I think, member band that was playing um, old, kind of old time music, like ragtime, I think, down in the basement. And they had art and different crafts that they were selling and folks were having tea and coffee. And I got to hear a little bit about the history of the building and talk to residents and I, I think they let me off the hook easy because it was my first time. Nobody really hit me up with too many major concerns. They more wanted to kind of know about me and where I was from. And of course, we chatted about dogs because that's always what, you know, conversation devolves into when I'm involved. Um, but uh, no, it was really nice to get out and meet folks. And um, I did speak with Evy about possibly coming um, once a month, just to sit down, talk to residents, hear any concerns that they may have. Um, so I would be more than happy to kind of do that. We talked about perhaps like the first Wednesday um, of every month around ten AM, they have a kind of coffee hour around or coffee period from nine to twelve. And um, would be a good opportunity to kind of get out there and chat with some residents. Let's see. I think that's pretty much it.
Can, can I make a request or, or ask a question?
Go for it.
I would have really liked to go to the kickoff, one of the kickoff meetings, but tomorrow morning I have an appointment and probably won't be able to log on for more than half an hour. Which maybe that's long enough. I don't know. And then tomorrow night I have another um, Zoom that I was going to attend. Hopefully with the uh, Berlin Boylston School District. So uh, can you just give us an update at next meet, at our next meeting on how the budget kickoff went?
Absolutely. And I expect it'll be less than a half an hour, Chris. I anticipate keeping it short. Um, but I can certainly give an update.
Okay, I'll try to log in in the morning and uh, if that doesn't work, because I have to get going, then um, be nice to just have an update.
Sure, I'll put it in the TA report.
Okay.
If that works for y'all.
I put a little tickler on the schedule to, to remind us of that, put that on the TA report.
Perfect.
Are there other sort of questions uh, for this, for Kristen? Uh, Kristen, what's the status of the tax bills?
I've been asked. So I have great news. Um, the bridge between the assessors office and the tax uh, office was completed on Thursday. And the bills should be going out this week.
I mean, that, that's good for a revenue standpoint. I don't know how much people are like, hey, it's Christmas card season. Oh, no, wait a minute, the tax bill.
I understand the timing is not ideal and I, I do wish that it was different. Um, hopefully moving forward, we won't, we'll be on a bit of a better schedule. So that won't happen, folks.
There was a couple of alignment things, so which even outside the control of the town that sort of led to these delays.
Right. We'll try not to have a Christmas surprise going forward.
And then to say out loud, so you and I remember Kristen, uh, we're scheduled to do agenda setting on Thanksgiving Day, which probably doesn't work for either of us.
Not so much.
So we'll, we'll find a time on Wednesday uh, to do that agenda setting.
Sounds good. Okay.
Oh. Shocking. Uh, do you have any update on where we are for in, in the process for hiring fire chief? I lost track of the uh, agenda of this time schedule.
Um, so not other than the one that I had and before, and I don't know if I had shared it. Um, we had four strong um, candidates as of the last one. Uh, the last time I checked in, which was, I believe, the week before last. Um, and we are closing, I believe, on the sixteenth, if I'm not mistaken. I just have to double check that date. Um, so we are very close. Um, several of the candidates had expressed concern about the salary range. And that was the only update I have at this time. I should have more in just a couple of days. So for the next meeting for you.
Thank you.
Um, great. So if we move on to old business, uh, Kristen, uh, hiring process update for the treasurer collector. You sort of touched on this a little bit in your report, but.
I did, yes. So I actually had a great meeting with Dennis, um, kind of in lieu of doing an evaluation, since he has given his notice. We sat down and I have a two-page list of um, not only sort of the roles and duties of the office, but also some, you know, caveats and pitfalls and, you know, outstanding projects and things to be aware of. So I've got a great kind of outgoing slash incoming list for our hopeful new treasurer collector. And I put together a potential job ad after looking at salaries, which I will share with you. Um, it is in the folder, but I'll put it up there for the public to see as well. Um, so what I did was I went on the Mass Municipal Association to look at jobs that are available right now for treasure collectors specifically and only. I threw out Worcester because that's just not in our marketplace in terms of size or salary. So the ones that were left were Needham, Westboro, Air and Belcher Town. Um, Needham, I think is still a little out and you'll see they were coming in higher. Their range was eighty-seven to one eighteen. Westboro was eighty to one oh nine. Air was seventy-two to seventy-five. That was a little bit on the low side. Belcher Town was seventy-seven to ninety-nine. So the one thing I noticed is with the exception of air, there is a large range um, in all of these job postings. So I did an average between the minimum and the maximum of those four postings that are currently out there and came out to between seventy-nine, five hundred and ten and one hundred five thirty-three. I also took a look at the H R S study as was suggested. And that range they suggested was seventy-six to one hundred. So tracks somewhat close to the average range. That was based on forty hours a week. Um, I did calculate that based on forty hours a week because those positions in the larger towns were presumed to be based on forty hours a week. However, it should be noted, our current treasurer is at just shy of seventy-nine, based on thirty-seven hours a week, and he has been here for a very long time. So with all of that in mind, I put together, let me go back, um, a job description and I really went back and forth on range because I was trying to take into account our size, our location, what we're currently paying our treasurer, what the study recommended, what's out there right now. And basically, what I came up with for a range for the board as a starting point for discussion was eighty to a hundred.
I think that sounds good.
Uh, I mean, I think the range is good. I, I think just, I don't know. I would love it to be seventy-five to a hundred, just because I'd like to at least have our range be less, at some point, a little bit less than we're paying at the moment. For someone who is both talented and has been here a long time, but uh.
I actually had seventy-five at first and then I went, is twenty-five thousand too much of a range? And I, I wasn't sure. So I went back and forth on that, Scott.
Yep. You know, I, I think when said and done, I'd rather sort of be in the eighties when we're all done and not in the nineties, but.
Would you want to see it more like a seventy-five to ninety-five kind of shift? I mean, I kind of thought that hundred thousand dollar number might be exciting to people, not that we necessarily.
I think it might be exciting to people, but it also might not be a number that we're willing to pay. I think you'd have to be quite talented and like, hey, I can do this whole job without an assistant. And that's how we're gonna make this affordable to the town sort of thing, which I don't think is the, the case. I.
Sure. I mean, in that case, you could do a seventy-five to ninety-five if that's a more reasonable or palatable range. And like I said, I really, I, I went back and forth but within seventy-five to a hundred and I had different numbers. So that's why I wanted to obviously discuss it. More minds are better than just me.
Right. It's okay.
That sounds. That range is just, it's just going to have a trickle down effect of all the other positions in the town. So uh, tonight is not the hill that I will die on for that range. But there will be other hills that I will die on later on weeks. So um, I'm okay with you want to go seventy-five to a hundred. Ninety-five, how about seventy-five, ninety-five?
That's fine.
I think that's, it thinks that, because I agree that, that uh, again, even to give a hundred, I would.
They're going to shoot, they're going to start at a hundred. They're gonna start at a hundred.
They're gonna start at a hundred and, and, and I said, if you're a hundred, you're willing to like, oh, I don't need a twenty-hour week assistant. Then we'll do it, but no one's going to do that. So.
No, no. I think that makes sense. Um, and then I don't know if you had a chance to look at the job, the draft job description that is in there. Um, I think it, you know, really covers a lot of the key points that I gleaned from my conversation with Dennis. Obviously taking into account Vadar and Harper's, um, being, having your certification or being able to obtain it within three years of appointment. And looking for somebody with preferably a bachelor's degree um, in business administration or finance.
Kristen, when you put this together, I know that Dennis has current support and it's something that we kind of danced around the other week about, um, are there things that those positions could do that are currently being done by treasurer collector that you could lift out of, you know, out of that? Or is that like in addition to, we're looking at treasurer collector, we need to look at the other support positions?
I, I think based on my conversation with Dennis, I think the best approach would be to bring in a treasurer collector, have them take a comprehensive look at the office and make a recommendation. Because right now there are, there's a four-hour file clerk position and then there's the assistant treasurer, the assistant collector. Um, my understanding is that operation flows pretty smoothly the way that it's working now. Um, there are a number of projects that Dennis was working on and we talked a little bit about some additional cross-training between the assistant treasurer and the assistant collector and perhaps aligning their schedules one day. So there can be a bit more of that. But I would almost really like to see a fresh kind of person come in, take a look at the office that, you know, and make a recommendation on, on operations there.
Dennis is leaving, what, the beginning of February?
Yes, I believe it's the third, if I'm not mistaken.
So we're going to try and shoot for maybe a hiring sometime end of next month, beginning of January, no later than the middle to give two weeks of
Yes.
Training.
He, he would like at least um, that much overlap, um, if possible. And he said, if possible to have a little bit more, that would be great. There's a lot of information to pass over. So I, if I have your blessing, I'd like to get this posted tomorrow, um, up on the Mass Municipal website with the seventy-five to ninety-five salary.
Sounds good.
Do we need a motion on that? Or is just the fact we're consenting going to be good enough? Because you actually, doesn't the collector treasurer report to you?
They do. So um, as long as you guys are in agreement, you don't have anything to change on that. I don't have uh, the need for specifically a motion. I just wanted to get your input.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you all.
Uh, new business. A review and vote on amendment of agreement for a collective party agreement covering the period of July first, twenty twenty-one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four with the Berlin Police Union Local two sixty-four.
All right. Um, thank you, Scott. Um, we basically have come to an agreement with the Berlin. All right. Um, thank you, Scott. Um, we basically have come to an agreement with the Berlin Police Union. It would be retroactive to July one of twenty twenty-one through June thirty of twenty twenty-four. Um, and I don't know how the board prefers I do this. If you would like me to just share some key highlights from it. If you'd like to have, um, more of an open discussion, I know we discussed it in exec, so I don't want to spend too long, but how, how would you best?
Highlights, highlights for, for the, I mean, I, I'll, I'll share my opinions. So I'll have to do the highlights.
Sure. Um, so I'll just go over some of the key points. Um, it does include a two-point-five percent increase um, eh, for FY twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four. There is a new salary schedule that is set forth in it. Um, it does request an increase in second shift to four and a half percent. Um, bonus, um, additional pay for second shift and five and a half point five percent additional pay for third shift. Um, it does, um, include the move to bi-weekly pay by the end of FY twenty-four, or not before, excuse me, the end of June of twenty twenty-four. Um, it does discuss, um, overtime and comp time that was accumulated in lieu of overtime being used by the end of every fiscal year and not carried over to the following year. Um, it adds Juneteenth to the list of holidays effective July one, twenty twenty-two, with a retro Juneteenth for those who were in the bargaining unit on June nineteenth of twenty twenty-two, where they could be granted one floating day off, um, or a day pay in lieu of the floating holiday. Um, it also increases detail pay, um, which is not paid by town or school, the detail rate to fifty-five dollars an hour. And that would be at ti- uh, time and a half for nights, weekends and holidays. It has a small, I would say modest increase for educational incentives that is still well under the Quinn bill, um, level of percentage requirements, very small increase on clothing allowance. And that is it. Um, everything, the rest is basically cleaning up contract language. Um, it's pretty standard. It, it took a long time to negotiate. From what I understand, I kind of came in on the tail end of it and most of it was done. So I certainly cannot take credit for negotiating the whole thing. I just took a couple of the points and brought them across the finish line. Um, but this is where we are. It has been ratified by the police union and it is now before the board for their vote.
Can I, can I, can I just say, um, that I wanted to thank Margaret for her help with the, and, and we started this negotiation back when Chief Galvin was still with us and then Eric. And then we also should thank, um, Liz Valerio, our, uh, labor counsel and John Becker was the union counsel. So would you like a motion?
Um, yeah, I pegged you have a comment, any comments before we do the? I, I think as any good union contract, there are, uh, things the town would like to see differently, but happy the union agreed to what they did. I think the union is happy that we've agreed to some of the things we've agreed to as well. Uh, I think it was all done in relatively good faith and, and, uh, I'm happy to see this get approved. Um, and so, uh, do you want to make the motion, Chris?
Sure. I make a motion, um, on the memorandum of agreement for the collective, collective bargaining agreement covering the period from July one, twenty twenty-one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four with the Berlin Police Union Local Two Six Four M C O P.
Second.
Um, I think we've had our conversations and so I think we're ready for a vote. Hawkins, I.
Keith, I.
Stone, I.
Congratulations. We have a union contract with the police.
Great. Thank you, everyone. And thank you. I'd like to echo what Chris said, too. Thank you, everybody who participated in this process, especially Margaret for doing the vast majority of it. So, um, thanks to all.
Uh, let's see. Uh, next item is, uh, approved for signature by the chair or vice chair or and vice chair. Uh, the local initiative program regulatory agreements, uh, for the homes at Highland Ridge Housing Development of off of Highland Street. A lot to make of that.
We have some folks here, uh, to explain this, but I'll give a quick overview. Um, they, this is a regulatory agreement and declaration of restrictive covenants for the Highland Ridge project, which is sixty-six condominium duplex units, ten of which they are looking to sell at eighty percent of the regional medium household income. They are known as lower moderate units. Um, those ten low and moderate income units are two-bedroom units at a size of nine hundred square feet. And this is a project that does involve the State Department of Housing and Community Development before this local incentive, uh, sorry, local initiative program, um, of including these affordable units can be added or approved by the state. It does need to be approved locally by the town of Berlin. And we do have some representatives here from the project that can go into a little further detail and answer any questions that you may have. So I'm not sure if Stephanie, Kathy or Maureen is up to speak, but.
Let's see. Stephanie, Kathy or Maureen, do you have, uh, something to add or?
Well, what we had discussed this afternoon, um, DHCD is, seems happy with the regulatory agreement as it is. And has given its blessing.
This is Maureen. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry. I was getting a glass of water. Um, yes, DHCD has approved the regulatory agreement. There was some back and forth with, um, Kathy Neffler and the developer's attorney and everything has, um, uh, been answered. So they're quite comfortable with everything and the, and the developers as well. I believe you received a, the last updated version, Kathy, out this morning. Um, I didn't notice any changes on it. They had highlighted, um, some information at the, on the last, like exhibit B and exhibit A that they had added, but other than that, I think it's fine. And I think what they changed was fine as well.
Great. And this is Stephanie again. I just wanted to add, um, I took a look on the registry of deeds website. Um, actually the development documents, you seem to be in good shape. The master deed and an amendment or two, um, have been recorded as well as the bylaws.
Great. And, and am I to understand correctly, uh, this will go through a lottery process?
Yes, we have. We started marking it about, uh, we, or two weeks. Um, the applicant lottery will, is scheduled for January thirty-first. And we will try to move that up if we can, but it's scheduled for January thirty-first. And we, I have to say, we have had a ton of interest in the project. Um, a lot of interest in the project, so I don't think there'll be any problem in selling the ten units.
Good. And then Kathy had your hand up for a moment.
I, I just wanted, I just, I just wanted to let you know, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I just wanted to let you know I was here if anyone had questions, but that we've been through the regulatory agreement with DHCD. They're happy with it. Um, we're anxious for Maureen and, and, um, and Highland to get the lottery done, so we can start getting people in there.
Right. Uh, Chris or Peg, do you have questions?
No.
No, I don't think.
Thank you very much for sharing the, uh, some of the, the, these meeting dates and deadlines to the lottery. Um, and then, so I think we're ready for a motion then.
Okay. I will make a motion, uh, to approve the local initiative program, uh, regulatory agreement with sample affordable unit deed writer for the homes at Highland Ridge Housing Development.
Second.
I think we're ready for a vote. So Hawkins up.
Keith, I.
Stone, I.
Thank you very much, everyone. It's, uh, need to continue to offer affordable housing options here in the tent. Um, I think the, what, the next agenda item is.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You.
Thank you.
Uh, uh, the next steps for exploring, uh, some ability, uh, for, uh, eighteen seventy Town Hall. Uh, Peg, do you want to kick us off?
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks, Scott. Uh, if we can bring up, uh, Bill Brookings, who's under Deborah and Peter Wheeler, and did Evan come up or did I, did we lose Evan? Uh, all right. So basically, um, all I want to talk to tonight, uh, because we're limited in scope from what's on the agenda. And I know that there are multiple items to talk about in regard to eighteen seventy. But the reason why I asked Bill and Evan to come tonight and also a member, um, from the church is just really to talk about the sewer slash leach pit, whatever you want to call it, um, over at the church. This has been an item that's been kicked around for multiple years from committee to committee. So I wanted to ask Bill, uh, and others basically for just an overview of the problem. Um, where it involves, you know, potentially three parcels of land. So an overview of the problem, uh, what could be, uh, you know, potential next steps? I don't anticipate any type of, uh, discussion tonight in terms of we have to vote on something, but because, you know, Bill knows a little bit about this and somebody knows a little bit about this. I would like just a whole general picture of what's going on and what are next steps. So any discussion in terms of covenant plowing, those are off the, the table. It's not on the agenda. They will not be discussed tonight. So Mr. Brookings, um, if you kind of want to take it away and give us an update, that would be most appreciated.
Good evening.
Hi, Bill. Thanks for coming.
Sure. Should we start with the nineteen fifty-eight documents or?
No, 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 no. We are starting with the twenty twenty-two documents.
All right. Well, what we have is a pre-existing non-conforming shared system. So you've got the eighteen seventy building, which I guess is a public building, sixteen, um, Woodward Ave, which is a private rev- residence, sharing a leach area that's located on sixteen Central Street, the first parish church, uh, property. So you've got three parties involved. You've got two buildings using a system on property that's actually not using that system. So it's, it's very unique. Uh, and, and again, there are us from nineteen fifty-eight, nineteen fifty-nine documents that kind of talk about that being agreed to. You know, I don't know how that would hold up today, but it, you know, this current shared system doesn't meet, you know, today's code. Again, there's a, the Board of Health did kind of summarize this in a letter of October twentieth, twenty twenty. You know, the kind of discusses, um, the attorney for the person that owned sixteen Woodward had brought that to the attention in oh four, oh five and oh eight. Um, but, uh, you know, there, there are legal documents, covenants, things like that would have to be developed that would address the, the shared system. And a separate issue is there is no approved design flow for the eighteen seventy building. There's no existing permit. There's no soil testing, no deep holes, no perk test. So there's no way to really assess, you know, what the loading would be for that existing pit. And, you know, to, to determine that, we probably have to do some soil testing. And, um, you know, once a number was arrived at minus the bedroom flow from the home, which is three hundred and thirty gallons a day for a three-bedroom, and that would leave, you know, an existing flow for the eighteen seventy building. So not knowing what the proposed use is there, it's, um, something that would have to be investigated.
So Bill, what are the current like impacts to either, uh, Old Town Hall or Mrs. Lindsay's house or the church, uh, because of current conditions?
Well, um, you know, again, before a, a property is sold, a title five inspection has to be done. So that was done for, um, sixteen Woodward back in, uh, oh one. And these issues were brought up in that report also, but in theory, before that property changes hands, you know, I think a sharp attorney would want all this, uh, addressed.
Wow. So what do you recommend? You know, obviously there's a ton of questions to, to be answered, and I don't think that you have them or anybody on this call has them. Um, what would you recommend as next steps?
Um, I'm not an attorney and don't claim to be. I don't know if town council has reviewed you, the nineteen fifty's documents or the letters from attorney Burke of oh four, oh five and oh eight, but that would be a good start.
Okay.
Yeah, they might be able to advise the town on preparing, you know, the, the, the shared system documents required by the state code are kind of fill in the blanks. And then they just recorded in the, the, the deeds of the properties that are involved. But again, not knowing what your plans are for that use, you know, it may involve, uh, modifying or upgrading the system for a, a larger flow.
Well, and, and Bill, I think, you know, we're kind of sort of backing into it. I mean, at least from my perspective, you know, eighteen seventy is a potential revenue generating, um, item for the town, you know, depending upon what we can use it for, uh, whether it's events, whether it's, you know, council on aging, whether it's cooking meals, you know, so that's kind of like a back door, you know, into it. But this seems to be like chicken and the egg. It's like, well, what do you want the building to be? Well, depending upon what you want the building to be, the system is, well, depending upon what the system is, here's what the building can be. So, you know, I, I, I don't, I don't know. And, and I think that that's my source of confusion is that I don't know what to do and I don't know what steps to take, but you're recommending legal review or potential legal review of all the documents?
Correct. Because again, the, the shared system that's there is pre-existing, it's respected, but it doesn't meet current code.
Hmm.
And, and if, you know, if, you know, say, say a proposed upgrade system was to be installed to allow more use at the eighteen seventy building, you know, would it continue to be located on the church's property? So before you go ahead and approve the existing shared system that's there, it might be worth investigating what the ultimate plan is because that shared system could potentially be upgraded, remain on the church's property, but perhaps handle a larger flow. And that, that's something an engineer would probably have to look at. I don't know if Evan is here tonight, but I know he was looking into that.
Yeah, he was. Um, and I think that's part of it. I mean, this is definitely, I certainly don't plan on walking away tonight to be like, woo-hoo, we've solved it. Uh, but it's gonna be in steps because you could go back, you could give this document to town council and town council can say, you know, Plan A is gonna cost you fifty thousand and we can, Plan B is gonna cost you two hundred thousand dollars and we can, Plan C, which is the Cadillac, will cost eight-point-five bazillion dollars. So, you know, you're gonna need that information to be able to say, we can do it, the town can afford it, or holy crap, we need to change this right now because we are in violation of something, 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 something. But without proper legal advice, I think we're just kind of still holding.
We, do we have a, I mean, what is the goal here, you know?
Well, the building.
For me, the, the goal would be, I think, where, where the agenda item sort of implies is, you know, we would love to be able to put a decent, longer-term septic system into eighteen seventy Town Hall so that it could potentially support, uh, a commercial kitchen. And I would almost love to start this like, uh, in some respects, and because I'm not aware, I could say it because there's also no votes. I could care less with the nineteen fifty-eight, nineteen fifty-nine covenants is, is let's design up something that works for the current twenty twenty-two needs and then figure out what legal documents we need to create to support that or even the legal process. Um, and that, you know, some of it might be that we have to do some testing of the, the eighteen seventy Town Hall land to see whether or not there's, now, because eighteen seventy Town Hall owns almost no land unto itself, I can't imagine that we could put a septic system or even a holding tank, uh, on that property. Um, uh, but then if we figured out the direction we wanted to go, I think for me, again, uh, the legal, assuming we could solve all the legal problems, you know, so it would be whether or not we want a septic system that is for a new subject of that takes care of three parties that the, you know, that the church, the, the eighteen seventy Town Hall and the house, or whether or not we want to use this opportunity to go do three separate systems, uh, you know, um, uh, so that we are not as entangled fifty years from now as we are today.
Um, but, but, but right now, right, you know, i- if the goal is to put in a commercial kitchen, then you need to know the steps needed for, uh, this leak field and, and well, possibly not.
I, I think I would love to make sure that we had a septic system that would allow us the potential to do a commercial kitchen.
Yeah.
That, 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 because I think if we try to start with a commercial kitchen, we end up with a much bigger process because you have a bunch of health code stuff related for that. But if we wanted to say, hey, we want to make sure this. But if we wanted to say, hey, we want to make sure there's a septic system for eighteen seventy Town Hall that would allow us in the future, you know, to go that direction. How big is that going to be? What does that flow look like? And and where where can we put it?
I mean, to me, that was never the goal, was to put in a in a commercial kitchen. You know, the goal is, Scott, as you said, to figure out, do we need one system to handle three? Do we need three separate systems? And then it's almost like if we do one system to handle all three, what are some possibility, you know, what are some objectives that we meet down here? If we want, you know, one to handle each one, what are some that we need to handle down here? But to say that the goal is is a huge conventional kitchen, that's that's a pipe dream. Right now, I just want to make sure, I mean, Bill, if you're saying that the existing system is non-compliant, then obviously that's the goal, is how do we make it compliant, you know, with that?
And what and what are the rules as far as needing to make it compliant? I mean, i- i- is if we do know, if we don't have a goal of a commercial kitchen right now, are we okay the way it is now?
Again, it's pre-existing non-conforming, it's respected. An attorney, I think, would have to decide how protective the nineteen fifty's documents are to that system, because again, they do not meet current code for a shared system. So, you know, that private residence, I think, is really the the question mark, because if it's sold, again, in theory, its system should be in compliance with Title V.
Right. Well, that would be the goal if if we were going to have any of the properties change hands, then.
Correct. And that's what the board's letter closes saying that, you know, if if ownership's changing, you know, I think somebody's going to be looking to have that addressed. And as far as potential flow, again, that's what the engineer would come in, look at the lot sizes of the three parcels involved, maybe determine, you know, what a maximum flow could be. And then minus the house, minus the church, you know, you can look at existing flows or proposed flows, but you can increase flow again without a full compliance system. So that that's really the question. And again, we won't know that until, you know, soil testing is done, things like that.
You do you know anything about a commercial kitchen, Bill?
As far as the requirements for design for the septic?
Yes. Would it have to be on the property of the eighteen seventy?
Again, a shared system allows a compliance system to be off property. It's within an easement.
Okay, so it would still be shared then?
It could be, yes, unless the parcel could handle its own, which again is is probably unlikely. That's why they put it across the street in the beginning, you know, to begin with.
Right. I mean, I don't I don't know what the deal is with the residents of Woodward Ave. At some point, if they were to decide to sell the house, then that's when, you know, all this would have to be done, taken care of, I would assume.
Yep. I mean, it's all public record, and anyone, you know, looking at that would would certainly see it. Yep.
Yeah. So I mean, so again, it's, you know, Kristen, I know that this is not a high priority list. As I said, this can has been kicked multiple times for multiple years down the road, but it's to me, it could be potentially an ARPA use money, so it's not coming out of, you know, council anywhere, or or I guess the question is, can ARPA money be used for any type of legal review and or, as Bill was saying, you know, depending upon we want it to be, and we want it to be, and we want it to be, you know, for any type of drilling soil testing? Because I don't want the burden to go on the taxpayers, but yet if we keep putting this off, and Faith Lindsay and and her family decides to sell that house, we're right back where we were, and we're not going to have the element of time to do anything with it.
We can definitely look into it.
Barry, you were going to say something?
Town has an agreement or had an agreement with Faith's grandma, Faith's mother as the previous owner to that the drain the the affluent from the from the from her septic tank could go in the Town Hall system.
That's something that needs to be looked at, too. I mean, that agreement was years old, so are we still bound to it? What do we need to do with it? So that's the stuff that I pardon the pun, that needs to be flushed out, you know, with all of this. So all right. Bill, is there anything else that you could recommend besides, you know, first step going to a lawyer, or is it first step going to a lawyer and giving them him or her the three options of A, one system, three sites, three systems, three sites, and maybe they come back with questions to us? I just, I just don't want to get hung up on it's for, you know, a conventional kitchen. That was never ever my goal, you know, for that. It's part of it, but it is not the factor that is making me, you know, push this a little bit more.
Well, again, I think there's two separate issues. There's the 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 conformance or non-conformance of that existing shared system and, you know, what the ultimate flow would be from from that building. Any of the church, too. I mean, I I don't know what their plans are. You know, this could all work together to, you know, allow all buildings to be used as as they would like to be. But again, that begins with the engineer. You know, the engineer's job is to look at Title V, whereas the attorneys would be reviewing kind of the legal documents.
Do we have all those legal documents in one safe place?
There are all my files, and they've been copied to the selectmen. I don't know how your files are.
Kristen's waving. That means she's got them.
I know. I was actually going to ask, I'm sure I have them somewhere, but Bill, if if you have easy access to them, and you wouldn't mind forwarding them to me, that would be very helpful.
I'll be in Town Hall tomorrow morning.
Be a fire hazard in front of Kristen's door. She won't be able to get in. All right. Well, you know, Bill, I appreciate it, you know, at least it kind of sort of gives us some direction, a little bit more direction than we had a couple of weeks ago. That, you know, it's a multiple step process. It doesn't seem like it's going to be resolved soon. There's many things that need to be looked at, many things that need to be discussed, many things that need to be determined. It's just not the board. It's Faith Lindsay. It's the church.
Right.
You know, as well, but kind of like the momentum to start moving on this. But again, Kristen, it's budget season. This is your focus. So if this sits until spring, it sits until spring. That's fine. I'll put a calendar in, you know, reminder my calendar, and I'll annoy you, you know, come March for this, but it gives time to give things together, you know, and if the church wants to, you know, Peter, you know, and Barry, if the church wants to, you know, talk about what, you know, their goals, what they might be looking for, and then Scott and I and Chris can put stuff together, maybe from that, you know, and I can even reach out to to Faith Lindsay and talk to her as well, so that we have everything together, and we just start picking them up and saying, hey, we have twenty, but we can't do twenty. How's five?
So I guess I just want to clarify, you know, just my direction from the board on this one. Am I being asked to run this by legal counsel at this point? Okay, because I would say our legal budget is like way over.
Yeah, no, 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 no. As I said, it's not critical. I think right now it's, we're still going to be fact gathering. So you know, Bill, Bill will come with his small collection of documents. I only saw half of it at a Board of Health meeting that I was at, and I got scared and ran out of the room for that, you know, and to give the church a chance to reply, us a chance to reply, you know, ponder, think about it. And then maybe by March, April, we'll be in better shape to say, okay, insert Town Council here. We need your advice on.
Yeah, I think a good stat would be Kristen just reviewing the documents and see what you think.
Yep. Sure.
And again, you know, speaking to Evan, perhaps to see, you know, what his thoughts are on ultimate potential flow.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, he was such a tremendous resource to help out the library that he would seem the natural one to, you know, to tap and stay within the town.
Sure.
All right. Well, we're getting there. Still a little foggy, but a little less foggy, so I appreciate that. And whatever, honestly, Bill, when you're digging through your files, whatever you find, you know, send along, and we'll just put a corner aside in Kristen's office for all your paperwork.
All right.
Bring me a table, it sounds like.
All right. Well, you can use the board table. So there you go. Cool. All right. I appreciate you. Thank you.
All right. Have a good night. Kristen, I'll see you tomorrow.
Thank you so much.
Yep. Good night.
Thanks, Greg. I'm trying to. Kristen, you and ARPA funding, speaking of which.
Yes.
There's a combination of maybe us getting you up to speed on where we were at it, and where your thoughts are, except that you had some thoughts as well on ARPA.
I did. I I thought perhaps we could start with a quick overview of what has been committed to date. And I will share my screen with you. This is also on the drive. But essentially, why is this so small? I want this to be bigger. No. Hold on. Can you see this or is it really?
The little magnifying glass will make it bigger.
I think it's because I have my laptop and, hold on, there it goes. Where's the magnifying glass?
Down at the bottom center.
Oh, that's why I can't see my, sorry, my laptop's in the way. That's why. Okay, there we go. Okay, hopefully, that's a little bit easier to see. All right. So in speaking with the June and I put together where we believe we're at in terms of commitments made through ARPA. So the allocation was nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars. So just a little, I'm sorry, fifty-eight thousand, just a little shy of one million dollars, and we committed three thousand for a special audit. We committed social services twenty hours, twenty and a half hours a week for a social services director for twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. And also spent four hundred ninety-nine dollars on APA PsychNet, which is a social service program. So all of that totals up to approximately ninety-three thousand. We also committed thirty thousand for a gerontology study at UMass, and then we spent a thousand dollars doing some file cleanup around the Town Hall. That number might be a little bit smaller than that. But that should be well enough to cover what those expenses were. So all told, that leaves us with approximately eight hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred. And so what I did was, before I looked at your list, I just thought of what have I been hearing from all of the meetings that I've been having? Because I know there's a lot of funding, there's not a lot of funding, rather, and there are a lot of needs. So I put together just some ideas just for consideration and discussion purposes. The first two that came to mind were projects that have already been approved and funded, but came in over budget. I thought those would be sort of the low-hanging fruit that would make the most sense to fund, so we could actually fulfill those commitments. The ambulance, unfortunately, chief had sent me the paperwork that that did, believe it or not, is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars more than originally anticipated. And he has all of the documentation for that that he had forwarded. And the air handler came in at twenty-three thousand dollars over budget, but that was also in the spring of last year. I imagine with inflation, it could have gone up a bit, so I put in thirty just as a rough kind of caveat on that, because we'd have to go back and seek another estimate. And there's been a lot of discussion about OPEB. I've been speaking with Rich, the building inspector, and there is a system where if you make an initial investment of a minimum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it grows at a rate of, I believe, it was seven to eight percent per year. And that would be pretty much sufficient to cover our liability for a good portion of what remains of it. So and this is one we have to talk about, because I did mention this to June, and we have to make sure there are some retiree benefits that are eligible, some that are not for ARPA funding. So we'd have to check into this anyways, but I was just thinking, if we had the money, we could make that initial upfront investment, let it grow, and fulfill our liability in that way. And then the other four projects that came to kind of the top of my list, based on everything that I've been in discussions with department heads, boards, and committees, were the roof replacements at the old fire station and the municipal offices, facilities study, weatherization at the Highway Barn, and road engineering funding, so that those projects could start to move, we could start to move forward with some road projects. Now, in addition, of course, I had this lovely idea, but another, two other things have come to mind today. And meeting with Tim Wheeler, he was talking about potential complete streets match funding to look at the downtown area based on the Route sixty-two corridor study that's happening with CMR PC right now. And there are three steps to complete streets. The first is to complete a prioritization plan, which has already been done. The second is to go for design funding from the state, and the third is to actually go for construction funding. So if there's any funding that had to be put up as a match, that might be a consideration. And also, what was brought up to me today, that was another sort of project that wasn't able to be completed because of lack of full funding, was the eighteen seventy Town Hall parking lot with a ramp down to the Bullard House, because that came in approximately a hundred thousand dollars over budget. So those are just some of my ideas. I'm sure everyone has very diverse ideas, and those are just a drop in the bucket. The one recommendation I would have is that we don't take on twenty tiny projects, because the amount of procurement and project management time that would go into that would be really extensive for not having an ARPA project manager specifically. And I don't think the town has enough funding to justify spending that, and I think frankly, that would just be wasteful of money. I I would prefer to see the funding used in larger chunks where it can be most impactful would be my recommendation, but I turn it over to you. Just feel free to come at me and pick it apart.
I I think these are great ideas.
Great ideas, but we're also out of money.
That would pretty much get us out of money. That was the idea was to spend the money.
I mean, it is not a surprise to anybody watching that OPEB funding is not something I'm generally in favor of until we have rules that I can be convinced to not bankrupt the town, because I realize that we're one of the few towns without it, retiree health benefits, but that I also don't know many towns that wouldn't get out of it tomorrow if they could get out of it, because it is eating away a large chunk of the budget. I mean, our healthcare coverage just went up by, you're saying, eight to ten percent for our employees. And so if you add other folks on top of that, that continues to, it will be a growing investment. That said, I for at least the facility study and the Highway Barn weatherization, I think those have been on our list for a long time, and to find a way to get those moving forward, whether it's a find a way to get them with the forward would be something that I would think is great. I did look at the list, which which you last updated in July, and actually, several things on that list, we have been managed to, there have been funding sources that have come in to take care of some of them. And so the number of sort of immediately competing projects is smaller than it used to be, and some of the things you've just listed here are on that list.
I did look at it after and noticed there was some overlap.
Not surprising things that you're hearing are things that we heard and lots of that. So that is, that is good in some sense.
Yeah, and and I think, you know, at least for me, Kristen, when we were doing the ARPA list, I I think I won't speak and will never speak for Scott and Chris, but my my focus was a little bit more narrow on, hey, these, you know, could be some things for the detriment of the town, you know, sidewalk and things like that. It didn't, honestly, it didn't register that we were going to come in, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over budget on two items. You know, so I I agree with Scott. OPEB, at this point in time, I will not support for that. Everything else, you need it. You got to pay for the ambulance. You got to pay for the the handler. The roofs, well, just look at the tarp that's up on the old fire station. Isn't that fun? The facility studies, we've bantered that around for twenty-five times. The weather, the weatherization, well, you know what? If you don't start to fix the Highway Barn, then we're going to start to see the seven, eight thousand dollar electric bills from the barn again when it gets really cold, and by then I'll just be on the ground, because I won't be able to do it anymore. And the road engineering, you talked to Fred, Fred was here last week or two weeks ago, and he talked about the two bridges on South Street needing help. So you take out OPEB, I would absolutely support everything else that's on that list.
Go ahead, Chris.
At this point, the OPEB is a savings account that's going to earn seven to eight percent interest. It's not like money's going to go out the door. We don't have things set up in order. It's not like money's gonna go out the door. We don't have things set up in order for that to happen. I I don't, I don't understand why you wouldn't support something like that, that has something to do with employees. Or employees at some point. And and keeping good people.
I don't know if you care about that.
Oh, sorry.
I I wouldn't oppose putting a article on town meeting that the town discover and and vote on open stuff. I just don't think, I think we have other sources for that. Um, and and I don't want us going forward as a select board and open that we don't really have the 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 votes from from the citizenry at this point.
Do a non-binding article on town meeting and.
Binding article on town meeting. We do it all the time to set up a special fund and put this dollar month in.
Yes, yes. I thought you were just looking for how many people were in favor of doing it. Meaning, you know, retiree health insurance and that kind of thing.
Well, well, I would do it by having them vote on actually using their tax dollars to 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 go for it. Cause again, I I have the concerns I've always had about open funding, but the, but I think we could. Allow some, I mean, we could even, cause we've we've stumbled at some of them, it's like what is a process? Because it's sort of the 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 chicken and egg sort of scenario, you know, we don't want towns uh employees spending a lot of time putting together the. Eyes and dotting the, they're crossing the Ts and dotted the Is on a proposal that we're ultimately gonna say we don't want to do. Uh, but we also don't want to write blank checks to projects uh that just suddenly we don't come back to and trying to find that middle ground. Where I thought we were getting close to before we got into a town meeting and Margaret's leaving and hiring a town administrator that have delayed this. Where we could say here are projects with, uh, it that as long as they're in this ballpark, it is worthy of spending staff time. To uh uh put this together so that we can, you know, but you can put out an RFR, an RFP on it to to get us the next steps. And again, that that facility study, I think there are several projects in town that we are sort of holding up, waiting on a facility study. That helps us figure out a better use of these buildings.
Yeah, I agree.
And and I think we might be at a point where, yes, Kristen, go ahead and start running an RFR and RFP and getting it out there. Uh, for uh facilities capital use study, assuming that it's gonna be in about this ballpark. You know, that we're not agreeing that for to sign something or for us writing contracts, but enough where that can start getting forward. Um, and I feel personally the same way about weatherization, whether it's this, my core belief of ARPA money. Was spend ARPA money to save us future expenses, you know, or or get us more grant money. And so spending it for weatherization so that five, ten, twenty years from now, we're spending less on utilities. You know, helps us with our green community stuff and helps us with the bottom line and respects tax laws. Because it is literally pouring money out the window when we don't have, when we don't do weatherization stuff. And so those are two that like, I I would be in favor of voting on today to make a a at least medium level priority for for. Kristen and by giving it to Kristen and whoever she delegates uh to uh to start putting teeth on those and and making those move forward.
Yeah, cause I mean, Chris, to answer your question about OPEB, I like facts and I like information and I don't have any. We authorize the invi- insurance advisory committee to go away and and look at items, you know. Elected officials, you boot them off insurance, you sell a town building, you restructure it. So coal pays are higher and 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 I have none of that. So without any of that information, in my heart, there was absolutely no way that I would ever support spending a half a million dollars on an unknown entity. When there could be other items in the town, as Kristen has graciously listed, that need to be taken care of right away.
Well, then maybe we need to have someone come and talk to us about it, so you have those facts. Like a no-brainer, if you're gonna make money on something that you invest, why wouldn't you do that? It's the same as uh putting money into a design and so that you can get grants.
But you're putting, you're putting money into an unknown entity. I don't, I, I don't know the impact on on everybody who takes insurance. Through the town, you know, I, to it, it does, personally, it does not make sense. And as I said, we gave the insurance advisory committee, you know, we the town, not we the board, we the town voted to say, go away. And come back with this information and it's been however many months.
Where they could, where we could find this money. They did do that.
That's that, that's only questions I at least have. I I want to make sure I've been clear with Richard. This is how I think it's going to bankrupt the town, you know, write the rules, show me rules that don't have a nineteen-year-old page. Who when they're thirty-nine, you know, retires and and for fifty years, we're paying for the health insurance. Show me the rule that you're writing to make sure that when we hire a fire chief at the end of their career, who's only here for two years, we're not forever paying their health insurance. And and I I heard from him and I've actually independently heard from others that you can write said rules. And so although I'm.
We have to do that. We have to make those decisions.
I have no information to base a decision on, so I'm not supporting.
Whether that we're doing it or.
I'm not saying we're support, we're gonna vote on that tonight. But I I am saying that you you need to understand the whole OPEB thing pegged so that you can make an educated decision.
And and I obviously, I don't understand the whole OPEB thing because information has not been provided to me. So once that information is provided, then I'll be able to make a sound decision, but until then, I'm out.
Okay, so why don't we have asked Kristen whether she can bring in someone who can talk to you and answer those questions in in a meeting?
I I have put on uh my notes when I talked to Kristen next about agenda setting, when an appropriate time is to bring someone back to talk about open.
Perfect, I think it it, I can understand why you would vote no if you don't understand it.
You know, and I don't think, you know, and and it's not just me who doesn't understand it, you know, typically this is gonna come down to a town vote. So it's not just a discussion with me, it's a discussion with the entire town that has to happen. So again, um, I I I'm in office to protect the folks of the town. And if I don't know what I'm doing, then I am certainly not going to be able to go out and talk to folks in the town to say you should support or you shouldn't support, so. Yeah, I'm I'm done talking about it.
Well, and and at least for tonight, I think we're clear, we do not have unanimity or even majority to to do that particular line item. I think we might have some, you know, and and some consensus on on several of them. Uh, that doesn't preclude us from ever going down the OPEB line. But but that the uh, uh, I gave the two before, the the uh. A capital or or facility study, the weatherization project, and for me, the other one is the air handler. Are things I think we really should be moving on relatively quickly. The ambulance gives me acid reflux. Um, thinking about a hundred thousand dollar overage. And so although I'm dangerously close to being able to prove it, I would just, it's one of those I would love to like get more details on. Um, uh, so that I I I feel a little less queasy. I don't think I'm ever not gonna be queasy about a hundred thousand dollar overage. But but uh, you know, I'd have questions like we do have ambulance reserve receipts, we do have other places. That that are there other places we can potentially do money on it. But but that I think at least for tonight, if we get any project moving forward, I think that's better than we've done for a little bit as we've gone through a. Uh, non, we we've not had the time or focus to to focus any of these to go forward.
I, the road engineering is something that we've had on the list, our list for a long time. The highway barn weatherization, does that, is that anything to do with the solar? No.
No, for me, that's sort of the like that when they roll up the the door, the top of the door has a gap that lets heat out and makes the building colder. And and the doors themselves are not quite of a right material, so they let it too much cold or heat in. And so I thought there were some weatherization projects that officially we might be able to get great community grants on. But that also is sort of more time and energy to get those, but it's also, you know, we're getting into sort of more winter stuff. And if we can do things now, it could, as Peg points out, stop the five and six, and I don't wanna think about it more. Bills.
Does, Kristen, does the road engineering, will that help with um? Getting uh any kind of grants?
So um, I'm actually just, I just shared the letter um on the screen from Fred. That came from back in January of this year, and it talks about the um doors and the weatherization. Um, and it also talks about the engineering funding for design engineering. For infrastructure throughout the town, um, which would qualify us for um. You know, construction grants under complete streets, culvert replacements, small bridge, mass works, or perhaps a tip. Um, so I was going off of this request. This was actually the only request I had specifically in writing from a department head or a border committee. That I had come across, and perhaps there were others and I saw the list. But I think, you know, one of the best things you can do, and Scott said it, you know, and hit it on the head. If you can take some of this money and use it to grow the amount of money that you can bring in through a grant. Um, I I.
That's what I was asking, and yes, the answer is yes, so yeah, I would, I, that's what I thought too. So I support the road engineering and the weather station, the facility, I would support all of them. Um, unless you wanted to wait on the ambulance um in order to see how much uh, how many receipts we have. Uh, beyond. Or even when is this ambulance coming in? They may have more receipts.
This is what's tricky too. The ambulance is on, I believe, a thirty-month delay. Um, unless we, so let's see.
Oh, yeah, I think I remember seeing something about that.
Right, so. There's three hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the ambulance in place. The chief is requesting an additional one nineteen oh sixty-five twenty to complete the purchase with all required equipment, including the communications. Um, related equipment. The delivery time is approximately thirty months. He can cut ten to twelve months out of the delivery time by pre-purchasing the chassis off the state bid list and delivering it to the manufacturer. And they're willing to hold it. Um, they were going into an input increase in February. So um, I, you know, that project in terms of the um striker. Power lift stretcher system piece is moving forward. We just have to figure out how to fund the rest of the ambulance.
And but but the money, will it be due in thirty months?
So it'll be due when the ambulance is delivered, yes.
So by then, it could be another hundred thousand.
Yeah, that's all.
Yeah.
So I would like us to sort of, I'd like to have a bigger conversation about the ambulance with some more sort of details. Uh, I I don't think that means no, I I likely am gonna vote for it, but again, just, you know, uh, that sort of stuff we started down the path with. Um, uh, even on the roof repairs, I I feel that's a plug number and not like what roofs does that get us, which roofs are the priority? Again, not that I don't think I'm gonna vote for it eventually, but I don't think I'm ready sort of today, and I don't think we're ready as a team as OPEB. Um, but the the rest of the list, which is no longer in front of me.
So it, it was a air handler of thirty, facilities of seventy-five, highway barn of twenty-five, road engineering of one fifty. Taking off OPEB of two fifty, roof of one ninety-one, and ambulance of one twenty.
Um, I I think those four, I I hear that we are pretty much in agreement on to allow staff to move forward. And 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 start putting together the RFRs, RFPs on those. With the idea that the other three, just because we're not voting on them today, does not mean that they're dead, they're just, I don't think, ready today.
So, do you have um data on what roof replacements?
That's why we're holding it.
No, Kristen or no?
So there's a draft, my understanding is there's a draft RFP. And like I said, th- this was just a very preliminary estimate, and I I just basically took the balance and put it into the roof replacements. Because they tend to be very expensive. I can certainly get some quotes um on that, so we could narrow down the price a bit more.
I thought it looked a little high actually, but I'm not sure which buildings we're talking about.
Um, the old fire station and the uh municipal offices.
Oh, well, municipal offices might be high.
This might, let me just uh, hold on, just pull up my list.
So then Scott, if we go back and we do air handler, facilities, highway barn, road, everyone check PEG math. Um, we're at like two eighty.
Yes. I get to two eighty as well.
And I'm hoping the facility study is a little high. I was just, you know, wanting to make sure there was sufficient.
And if I'm reading the spreadsheet well enough from from Fred and Highway, they said between a hundred, a hundred and fifty, so that also might be a little high. You know, and so again, I think our our votes, as much as we think this is the ballpark. Um, the, this is where we're thinking these are now medium priority things to be working on at least. And to to start, you know, putting this more together where we might have another vote to say, yes, this RFR is now ready to be executed or sent out. Or whatever the next good steps might be.
Yeah, yeah, what I would do and would have to throw this in the mix too um with some of the other things. But I mean, I already have the municipal offices, the the roof piece is on the list. But we can talk about that more, cause we did at least tarp.
Yeah.
The building, so we have a little bit of time there. Um, I would look at, um, some of these are drafted. And that's what I'm looking at on the list right now to see where we were at. It says the roof. Is drafted for the old fire station, so I don't know if the municipal offices piece is in there, but I'd have to look at it. The air handler already went out to bid, so it would just be a matter of basically putting it back out. And um, weatherization, I think if we're, we can likely get three quotes. Or you state bid list for that because it's under fifty. And I can get quotes and bring those back, and road engineering, I need to have a further conversation with Fred. Um, in terms of what his plan is exactly and bring that back to the board.
Sounds good. Is there uh, if I can be so bold as then to make a a motion that we uh approve as a, to add to Kristen's sort of. To-do list uh to spend uh ARPA money as follows, thirty thousand dollars for uh additional funding for the air handlers. Seventy-five thousand dollars for a facilities uh, a capital study, uh twenty-five thousand dollars towards weatherization at the highway barn. And a hundred and fifty thousand for uh highway design engineering infrastructure stuff. That would, as we said, help us in a better place for some state grants. Um, is that a, uh, is that something we are willing to do a second on and?
I'll do a second.
Yep.
Um, and then I'll have, I'll put ARPA back as a regular sort of item. Uh, I might actually be a little bit more specific in the agenda. Cause uh, we also have these, these other issues that we were talking about. Uh, are we ready? Any more discussion on those four?
I was just gonna add one more piece um in terms of deadlines for obligating and expending funds. You do have time, uh, December thirty-first of twenty-four is your deadline to obligate. And December thirty-first of twenty-six is your deadline to expend.
Okay.
Uh, I think we might be ready for vote then. Hawkins Eye.
Keith Eye.
Stone Eye.
Great, thank you very much. This is very helpful.
Yes.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Making the recommendation.
Uh, board questions, comments and liaisons on updates. Yep.
You want me to start?
Yep.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to briefly let you know that I attended the ZBA meeting. Um, Candell, which is the marijuana cultivation. Um, company uh withdrew their request for site plan approval and parking variances without prejudice. Um, it it may be that there will be another. Uh, business that will be going in there. I'll keep you posted.
I don't know if this, what what committee or this is, but uh, people should go to the town center this Saturday. Cause there are several events happening, uh, including potentially the. The uh vintage sale that might help alleviate some of our storage problems. Uh, that the uh, uh Arts and Cultural Society is doing on with in coordination with the Historical Commission to help us. But there's also the Friendship Fair and the Craft Fair also in downtown, downtown, downtown center.
You know what time all that starts, Scott?
I I think I, I think I know it, but I'm afraid to say it on something that's recorded. I think it's at least ten to two, if not longer.
I, yeah, I'm thinking ten, that's, that's usually when things start.
So all of those things are going on this weekend?
Yes, all at the same time. I think it is great that uh, that committees and and volunteer groups, cause you know, necessarily town things are coordinating their stuff. Cause it used to be, you know, the Friendship Fair was one weekend and the Craft Fair was another weekend. And I think the idea that they're on the same weekend is gonna drive a lot of traffic to town, but it's gonna, I think, increase the amount of success of both events pretty substantially.
I was trying to look up where the Friendship Fair was and I couldn't find it. It wasn't on their website, it wasn't. So I, you know.
There are definitely signs around town, uh, and I think they're actually having it in the meeting hall too. There are definitely signs around town, uh and I think they're actually having it in the meeting hall too, not uh. At the the parsonage.
Okay.
Anyway.
Sign outside the town hall parking lot, but and I thought it was for the craft fair that said.
Yeah, that is for the craft fair.
Not the craft fair, okay.
Yeah, and has his hand up. He probably could answer this question much easier for us.
It's on mute.
Yeah, the the first parish is having the Friendship Village Fair in the meeting house this year. Because we're also gonna have the um thrift shop open as usual over at Parish Hall and and the other side of the street. Um the Historical Society and Commissioner are holding a of. Yard sale at the Bullet House on the Bullet House site. And uh of course, the Arts and Crafts Fair is at eighteen seventy town hall.
Great.
And do you know the hours, Barry?
I believe that the. Friendship Village Fair is more like ten to two or ten to three. Um uh ours is gonna be, it's gonna be something like ten to two. The uh yard sale. But we do have a, we do have a a poster up on on Facebook and. And uh and out otherwise, so. Anyway, that's where all the things are and they're all right in that area. And in addition to the parking around in the center. There's gonna be some valet parking from the town offices parking lot. They're gonna have some, 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 allow people to vote, park down there and be trundled up to the village.
Nice.
Nice.
Thank you, Barry.
You're welcome.
Uh Peg.
Uh I'll go quick. So I know it's been an ongoing item with uh. Uh the Girl Scout and trying to honor uh uh update her badge. And I know that uh we had potentially kicked around maybe doing something with a piece of the nine eleven steel. Uh that Fred got from uh Port Authority. I did ask him for a sizing. He went about like this. So I'm guessing that's about two feet, maybe a foot, foot and a half. But you know, that's that's something that's ongoing. Um. There was email that had come in last week uh on the CM and PO touch base. That's about Metro West. Partnership uh Shelby, I can't remember her last name, who is a select woman from Westboro is one of the driving factors. So there's a public meeting on the sixteenth that I'll be going to, so. Can see maybe what finally is gonna get off the ground to figure out uh what to do with four ninety five, two ninety and ninety. Um Scott, maybe something for a future agenda item. I've sent two emails now to Earthworks in regard to their combined bylaws that they pulled off the May. Town uh town meeting and they said that they were going to do something with, and I'm just not getting any traction on that, so. Uh I don't know if potentially we invite them and say, what are you gonna do with it? Or if we go back to. Uh you know, the recommendation from KP Law to combine them or, you know, we reach out again yet to Middleborough. Who kind of sort of got around it and said that it was a board of health item because this soil was potentially contaminated and a health issue. To the town, therefore you can't bring it in. Uh but the fact is, is that Earthworks has gone extremely quiet. Uh Boston Kane Award, thank you, Mary, for sending that out. Again, it was one of those, I was going through emails and saw it, so I don't know if it's Mrs. Cracker. Is still our uh oldest living member if we give her another award. For that. And I reached out to the Woo Sox when I met with them. They said that potentially they could send their mascot down for. Christmas in Berlin. They have a gala going on that day, but they said that they would try to work something out to uh. Uh for us, so I keep you posted. And that's it.
Good. Go ahead, Kristen.
I forgot to include something rather important. Um we did get notice late Thursday that we received a grant. From Maya, our insurance company for three thousand and ninety one dollars. For a forestry communications headsets um for safety. This is a risk management grant. So has all to do about safety and um a fleet management software. Um program to ensure vehicles are properly maintained and tracking maintenance and all of those good things. So we were excited to receive that. We had also applied for cameras. Um for the town and town offices and police uh fire. Unfortunately, those were not awarded, but we got something, so I'm happy about that.
Okay.
Good. I think that might be it for tonight.
So would you like a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
So moved.
And seconded.
Uh I think we're all ready to vote Hawkins Eye.
Efi.
Stone Eye.
We thank you, everyone, for participating and watching. We will see you uh in after Thanksgiving.